Good evening and thank you for joining us for the Henry Ford College Regular Board of Trustees Meeting, February 15th. We are starting right on time at seven o'clock. This meeting is being held virtually via Zoom. The meeting number is nine six six two seven seven two thirty six eighty six. May I please have a roll call vote? I'm sorry, call the order.
Yep.
Trust trustee Patrick D'Ambrizio.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Barry.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Here, Normal, Illinois.
Trustee Adam Moser, here in Dearborn, Michigan. Trustee Mary Petlicov.
Here in Dearborn.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here in Dearborn.
Chair James Thor.
Here in Dearborn. Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the Henry Ford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting in closed session meeting on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved, support?
All right, we had a motion by trustee Barry, supported by trustee McDonald. Any corrections to the minutes? All right, I don't see any. Could we please have a roll call to accept the minutes?
Sure. Trustee D'Ambrizio.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Moser, yes. Trustee Petlicov.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thor.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is President's Items.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and trustees. It's good to see you in the second year, uh, second month of our year here. It's President's Day, so I hope that you're enjoying President's Day. Uh, as I think I've heard a couple of you mentioning just before we started this meeting, it looks like we're in store for some snow here in southeast Michigan. And so for any of our friends, our students and employees who are here at Henry Ford College, I'll remind you that our process for closing the campus in inclement weather is updated on the website. We just, uh, put out a link to it and social media. And, um, of course, we do have a very small contingent of our college still reporting to the campus, and that, uh, continue will be the ones who are most likely affected, uh, by any decision to close the campus, which of course we will always try to do if we do it as early as possible to, um, give you students and employees an opportunity to change your plans if you have to. Um, Mr. Chairman, my comments will be uncharacteristically short today because of that first thing I mentioned. Uh, I know that, um, many of you probably have some snow to clear out. I know that I do, and, um, I will start with a question that I'm getting from a lot of folks in the community and certainly employees of the college, and that is, when and how will employees of the college get access to the vaccine? And I have been working diligently on that and with some help from, uh, local leaders in both government and higher education and, um, secondary education. But we've been unable to secure, uh, a broad system to get vaccines for employees at Henry Ford College so far. That is not without trying. We, um, can, will continue to try, and of course, as soon as we do get, uh, any opportunity to give employees vaccinations, we would, uh, make those available as quickly as possible. Now, some of the questions that I've received about that are easy to answer. One is, um, would we attempt to try to give priority to those employees who are coming to campus as a result of their employment? And the answer to that is yes. Uh, number two is, would we get out as much information as quickly as possible? And the answer to that is yes. And, um, the, uh, the, the last question that is still up in the air for the college, um, but currently, um, I've got a basic answer, and that is, well, what about people who don't want to take the vaccine? And we're seeing some colleges around the state who, um, in the country who have taken that question and gone affirmatively to require people who are on the campus to take the vaccine. Um, that's a question we haven't come to yet, and it's one that, um, I know that, uh, my friend and colleague, Dr. Malaco, uh, will likely have to be the, uh, on the vanguard there to answer that question quickly and give me some advice about that. So I, I offer that you to the board and to my colleagues who are in attendance as one of the questions that we're seeing a lot of right now, and I'll continue to work on it to make access to those who do want to vaccinate as quickly as possible. One of the strongest arguments we have for that is that we do believe, um, eventually we will have, uh, high school students, Dearborn Publics, uh, and other public high school students attending our classes in front and face-to-face with our students. And that, of course, is the justification for why I'm so proud of, uh, what the leadership at Dearborn Public Schools have done in accomplishing a mass vaccination, uh, regimen just this last week. And so we'll hopefully make that argument and accomplish some vaccinations at our campus.
Sorry to interrupt you, President Cavalluna, but do we know who this Jack Green is?
Uh, you know, trustee Barry, I don't. And because that name doesn't ring a bell to me, are you referencing?
He had a face of a clown. I don't know, he might, I mean, I don't know, maybe something inappropriate coming up. Let's be careful, please. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt again.
No, no, I appreciate you doing that. In fact, um, please do let me know if that is something you all see again. It's hard for me to see all the windows, so that kind of support, trustee Barry, is exactly what I appreciate.
I'm sure, uh, VP Rhonda's all over right now. It's Jack Green. He had a face of a clown and bleeding and stuff like that, so it might be something else. Thank you.
This is Kathy. I did, I did take, stop his video. I noticed there's some initials next to his name. I believe we should remove him from the meeting.
Please do, if it's okay with the, with the president and chair. Thank you.
That's fine.
Uh, thank you. And, and again, trustee Barry, thank you for doing that. And, and any other trustee, uh, please do, or employee of the college who's watching, please give me a hand, um, like trustee Barry just did. I appreciate that, sir. Uh, the last, the last point I'll bring up about vaccines is that, uh, some staff have reported to me that they are getting anecdotal evidence of other colleges getting vaccines for their employees. And I have to report to you that, um, I've heard that also. I have not been able to confirm it. And the best I can say about this is it, it, it's not clear to me, um, what the process is for higher ed institutions to get the vaccine, much less, uh, citizens, um, who are old enough to be, uh, on the list of priority. But I'll keep working on it, and I will make sure that those employees at the college who are reporting to work face-to-face, uh, get a priority for that. The next question that I get very quickly right after those questions about vaccine are what our plans are to return to campus. And I was with you all, trustees, um, in your last meeting, and I'm, I'm happy to say that's not a question you'll have to discuss and debate today at your board meeting. And, uh, it's because, uh, we simply don't know enough yet as to when it will be safe and when it will be legal to have all of us back together on campus. The first priority decision will be about spring and summer, which is, uh, still not, um, been completed in the decisional process. And then the big, big decision will be in the fall, when the majority of our, uh, students return to campus. And I will tell you that we are opening up the playbook, literally, that we, we used almost a year ago now when we closed the campus. And that was the Return to Campus Core Team that came together as a cross-section of everything from the board down to, um, staff at the college, helping us decide how and when to open and close and, I'm sorry, close, then open again, then re-close, then reopen. And, and that group has begun meeting again in earnest just as recently as last week. But because we are closed, and because we just can't identify how and when things will change in the future, we have made the difficult decision to hold our graduation, which we do once a year, our commencement ceremony will be May eighth as scheduled, but it will be virtual. And it will be, uh, through a vendor that I have, uh, evaluated quite closely with help from, um, many members of our staff here and in consultation with seeing what other colleges around the region have done, uh, and in talking with my, uh, colleagues in the Dearborn Public Schools and what they learned from their, um, graduations last summer. And my, my hope is, and, um, through what I've seen at other universities around the country that have used, used this, is we will be able to give, uh, at least some semblance of the celebratory occasion that our graduates deserve, and it will be graduates from last year and this year. And then I, I have some hope and some optimism that there'll be some small aspects of this that may even be better than the in-person event. One of those is that, uh, each student graduate who decides to take up the opportunity will have the opportunity to record a ten-second, uh, segment in, um, calling out what they're proud of, or maybe some of the people that supported them. So I have to say, when I did see that, I thought it was a nice touch. And while it's not a perfect solution, it is something that gives, as I say, some recognition that it's, um, really a life-changing event for so many of our graduates. The last segment I'll talk to you all about, and I'll take your questions, is, um, staff announcements. You all were gracious enough to review my request that you approved the hire of Nicholas Pacero to help us as we roll out the I E M P. And it was a timely selection because we are starting to do that, uh, Institutional Energy Master Plan project right now, and we wanted to have a leader in that area to help that, um, retrofit and construction project continue. And he comes to us from Florida, uh, with a great, uh, resume. That's part of the information you've received in your board packet. Um, the other announcements, uh, are, are really not news. Uh, you, you all, uh, saw the emails that came out the end of last week regarding, um, the, uh, decision that Holly Diamond made to accept the interim vice president position of Student Affairs. I'm excited to have her on the team, and I know that, uh, many of you have, uh, high regard for her and also high hopes for her to continue in helping our students be successful while they're here, and then, of course, also helping, uh, students find a useful and seamless transition as they enroll in the college. I also am proud to say that, uh, our colleague, who's already showing her worth at this meeting, uh, Rhonda DeLong has been promoted to a new position at the college, which is Vice President of Marketing and Communications. And the statement that I put out about that last week, uh, indicated that this new position is an attempt to move our, uh, this, our ability to communicate and frankly, tell our story about our value in our community, to make it, uh, one of the highest priority positions in the college. Because we do have a fantastic story to tell about how we change lives through education, and how we bring, uh, individuals into college and make them get on the economic ladder to a better life. And, uh, we moved a couple of things to that new vice president office. And my expectation and hope is that those things will help us hone our message across the entire campus. And of course, those things are this, the group of dedicated individuals who work together to manage our website, and the group of dedicated individuals who do our recruiting. So that's an exciting transition and a well-deserved promotion for someone who's really done extraordinary work during the pandemic. And, uh, one little vignette to show you how, how valuable that is, is the work that Rhonda's team did just recently. I would encourage you to check out the story that they put out in social media and on our website about our student Rachel Lobdell. She i- is a student who was at our future, uh, I'm sorry, um, First Fridays, too many futures of frontliners, First Fridays. At, at our First Fridays event recently, she, um, had the guts to raise her hand and talk to me directly about her experience at Henry Ford College. And we've recounted that entire journey she's had from, uh, really high school until now being ready to graduate this May as a surgical technologist. On that trail that she's blazed involves, uh, feeling unsuccessful and bullied in high school, dropping out of high school. And these are things that Rachel said in an open forum, and was really proud of her courage to talk about it, but also the reasons why she talked about it. And it included, you know, going and working service jobs and, uh, retail jobs that were hard, but, uh, meaningful to help support her family when she was only a teenager. And then, um, moving into a place where she was connected, um, with her partner, and they had a child, and, and Rachel recounted that she believed at some point, um, she wanted her child to have a better future, and so she went back to college. And it took two tries, uh, a different institution, and then finally Henry Ford College, and that she's felt warmly, uh, welcomed here and supported, and she's going to be a success here in, in May, when she graduates with a surgical technology, uh, degree. And I'm just, uh, I'm really proud of the way that she shows the way we change lives. And she candidly said she did it for her four-year-old daughter. So, um, th- this is a article I encourage you to read and share because it shows what you trustees and you vice presidents and you executive directors and you faculty members and you, everyone from the top to the bottom of this institution can change lives through education, even during a pandemic. And the last thing I'll say about that is, think of what kind of person that is. What kind of person takes such pride in, in their journey that exposes themselves and the vulnerabilities they've suffered. That is, I think, one of the great things that we also add on top of an education, is a person who, who can communicate and can show the value of their journey. So, so, and that was a, a spotlight that Rhonda DeLong's team put on one of our students. And this pandemic has been tough. We haven't been able to see our students as much, and so I wanted you to be able to have some semblance of seeing what work and what, what value your work is doing. And of course, if the, uh, the board would, wouldn't mind at the end of its, um, agenda, I would like to make a comment. If, if all of the action items, um, are passed, then there are some HR items I would make addresses towards. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Any questions for President Cavalluna? Trustee Petlicov.
Yeah, um, in, in, uh, the conversations we're going to be having, and this is going to be Rhonda's probably main focus in the next few months. Um, Wayne County Community College has been putting out some heavy, um, advertisement on television of late. And they give the impression that they're, you know, it's the old advertisement where nobody's wearing a mask and everybody's on campus having a wonderful time. My fear is, is that as long as we continue to hold off making a decision, especially come fall, we will potentially lose more students to those surrounding community colleges that, uh, begin to have a more active presence of students on campus for those who are really interested in it. And I know we can't make that decision today, but are we going to be getting things prepared to do a quick push, uh, i- if we are able to, um, return to face-to-face, um, in, in order to help, um, retain those students who would prefer that and not lose them to other campuses that are already advertising as if they are open?
Yes, trustee Petlicov, that's a good question. Um, and, uh, I can say the answer to that is yes, we will be able to be pretty nimble because you, uh, trustees have put Mr. Long through her paces already on that very topic. Uh, on two occasions, we've attempted to move fairly nimbly and, and change the way we market to try and reach out and, and help, uh, enrollment issues during the pandemic. So the answer to that is yes, we've done that in the past, and we certainly can do it again in the future. Um, but your question is, is completely appropriate about, well, when do we make this call? And what are the factors we use to make this call? And you're also right that, uh, we can't do it right now, but every day that we go by and others are, um, and I haven't seen any advertisement from any of the other community colleges in our region, so I can't speak to that. But if, if other community colleges are saying things about their delivery model that gives them some type of advantage, uh, that's something that I, I would acknowledge it needs to be at least factored in.
Any other questions for President Cavalluna? Trustee Barry?
Just to follow up on trustee Petlicov's, uh, question, uh, is that committee that we formed, uh, they've been meeting? Because I'd reached out to trustee McDonald earlier, and if you can just kind of share some thoughts on that.
Uh, trustee Barry, uh, are you referencing the committee that was, um, doing Return to Campus?
Yes.
Yes, that, that, that committee is still, um, together, and they, uh, I will acknowledge they took a lull in their meeting pace once we settled into a COVID-normal reality. But now since the vaccine has become a new factor, that committee has started meeting again, and they re, they met as recently as last week.
Okay. Uh, is trustee McDonald still, still our, I guess, liaison to that committee?
Well, I, yes. Um, there's a, there's a core team of, I believe, four individuals that, um, that answer the questions as they come in day-to-day. Um, but the large committee, I think, is going to meet, uh, I think, let me check my calendar. Uh, that meeting is going to go, uh, the invites go out next week, and that one will have trustee McDonald on the invite. But the initial questions about, uh, for instance, trustee Barry, we had some issues with, um, screeners, having some folks come through and who are kind of nasty, the screeners, and there, we quickly realized we needed a small group of people who could make timely decisions about, uh, campus issues. And that, that small group is the one that has started meeting again. The large group, um, invites will go out next week.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, President Cavalluna. Next item, please. Next item is discussion items. Financial Stability Committee, Chair Thor.
This is a follow-up from an item that we had first discussed last fall, and, uh, we had begun to, to take very preliminary steps back in October. And where the idea behind it was to create an ad hoc committee, uh, trustee Barry had asked for last year to look at the financial stability for the campus long-term. Normally, what the college is always looking at is the finances and, and forecasting out for about five years. The idea behind this committee would be to look more in the ten-plus-year range to see, uh, the financial stability for the college. Based on our bylaws, the next steps is to create the committee, and that's one of the things that we're going to be discussing tonight, is, uh, the formation of the individuals that will be on the committee, uh, they're going to be tasked with, and a timeline, uh, for when we'll want to have the, the committee formed, when would we expect, uh, to have some reports back from the committee? Trustee Barry, is there anything that you'd want to add?
I think you pretty much covered it.
All right. So the one experience that I fully recall from the college for an ad hoc committee was when we did the presidential search a few years ago. And at that point, what we chose to do was to allow each trustee to put two individuals on the search committee board. I don't want a committee that's large, that is that large. I don't think anyone wants it to be that big. So what I was going to ask is if each of us as trustees would like to nominate, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but nominate one individual from our community that is, uh, either in Dearborn or the Dearborn Heights area that we represent, that could serve on this committee, also allowing President Cavalluna then to reach out to the people in the college community that he thinks would be able to help us so we can start to have the conversation of what is the college's long-term financial future?
If we're going to, and, and I totally agree, that was going to be one of my, um, concerns, was that I've never been involved with a committee where, um, if, uh, people are invited to the, uh, community, that every board member doesn't get an opportunity to have input and select somebody into the pile, and one person each is very, um, understandable. That being said, we, before you can invite somebody to participate, we have to have a pretty clear understanding of what we're inviting them to. What is our, uh, objective? What is, what are we anticipating their time, um, to be committing to and all of that? I haven't yet really heard. I'm kind of confused. I don't know if everybody saw that I sent our, um, from 2018, our college action plan that, um, aligns, uh, with the college strategic plan and, um, which could help identify, but I don't want to be inviting somebody not understanding what I'm inviting them to and having a, a, a clear, um, description of what they're signing onto.
President Cavalluna, do you want to unmute yourself so you'll be able to jump in easier to answer this? Um, before you say anything, trustee McDonald, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, my question too is basically about the scope. When we talk about, um, financial stability, uh, that just could encompass so many things because everything has a financial cost to it. So I'm just, want some clarification of the scope that we're talking about as well.
And that's a good question that both of you had, and that's one of the things that we can discuss today, is what are some of the objectives that we would want to have this committee work, work towards, right?
Well, then, my question would be, do we need this committee? That, you know, to, first off is, what are we using this committee for? Because I have sat on more committees and task force where my time was wasted after a year, and nothing was done with anything that we, uh, worked on. And you get a lot of very frustrated community members who are asked to, you know, the president's search actually had a nice outcome, but, and it was worth having people, um, uh, invited in. But I've sat on some other ones for the city and, and other, um, in the years in the past, and we worked our, uh, tails off, uh, collecting data, looking at data, having, you know, all these meetings, and then it kind of just went, disappeared into the ground because this was a repeat performance of things that were already being done by people who are employed.
Well, you, you bring up a good point, and I'll ask this one question is, I, I did review what you had sent us from back in 2018, and it talked about the strategic plan. Remind me, it looked like the strategic plan, uh, was done at the end of last year, correct? President Cavalluna, is that, are we have another?
Yeah, yeah. It, so when you said done, I misunderstood you, Mr. Chairman. When you said done, I thought completed, but now I understand you're saying it, it, it ran out. And you're right, if, if that's what you meant, it did run out at the end of 2020. Um, so, so, uh, the, the chairman at that time, uh, chairman Barry, asked there be a, a committee on strategic planning that was headed by former trustee Mead. And trustee Mead made a recommendation to the board that strategic planning not continue during the pandemic. Um, we were, we were, we were going great guns on that. You'll recall, we had a board retreat where, uh, Vice Presidents Gonko and Nealon talked about where they wanted to start working on strategic planning. But in taking trust, former trustee Mead's recommendation, uh, chairman Barry, uh, recommended that we not try to go forward with strategic planning in the, the, the calendar year of 2020, and that if at a future date, the college think through the ways to start, starting up the, the strategic planning process again. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and, and what it brings me back to, and trustee Petlicov, is normally when we do a strategic plan, we're looking out three to five years, right? We need to look out a little bit, but we can't look out too far. We know that's inherently a, a wasted time. But we also know that when we're doing a strategic plan, if we're just looking at what's needed in the next three to five years, or our goals in that, I'll call it medium term, we all know that there's projects on our campus that we might not get to in the next five years, but we can't forget that those still need to be done. And I believe that's where this committee would start to, to fill in. And that's what I was wondering is that are we going to need to have two committees kind of running side by side, one in the medium term with the strategic plan, one with the, the long-term, so we can be figuring out financially what is needed for these other projects? Trustee Barry?
You are correct, Chair Thorpe, that when we had this discussion, the recommendation, and obviously we all trusted, uh, Dr. Mead when it came to the strategic plan, and we, you know, we decided that we would hold off. Our strategic plan ran out in 2020, and we did kind of agree that we would be moving forward with two separate committees. Now to answer, uh, and trustee Petlicov makes a very, very valid point that, you know, you get a committee to work, do a lot of studies, a lot of time goes into it, but then nothing happens. Uh, I, I would like to, uh, challenge this board that when this commit, if this committee is put together and they come back with a recommendation, that we definitely follow up on it. Uh, since I've been involved, I keep hearing about the infrastructure at the college, the campus, you know, some minor, some minor things that needs to be done, and some like very, very major, uh, things, you know, liberal arts building, for example. That's just like one piece. So when we had a discussion, I'm looking at the minutes from the, do, 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 November 2020, November 16th, 2020 meeting, I'm looking at the minutes. So I guess just to kind of keep it simple, it's like, if we look out ten years or further, the question is, is, is this college going to be around? Is it still going to be called Henry Ford College? We went into some financial difficulties not too long ago, and we overcame them, and we're here, and we're strong now. But we need to But we need to look at the infrastructure and the cost moving forward. We're not going to get to everything the next two years, three years, four years. That's not going to be included in the strategic plan. The strategic plan has its separate mission. So what we discussed or what I said in that meeting and really nobody objected to it was that the committee, that's a good question that, you know, before you ask somebody to serve on the committee, what are we doing here? So I'm going to read right from the minutes here. The committee's approach will be three pronged. One is to inventory the physical infrastructure of the college. Let's find out what needs to be done. You know, I sell real estate in the area and we usually have a private inspection done. We, you know, soon as we get into contract. And the private inspector comes in hired by the buyer and the private inspector comes in and says, Mr. And Mrs. Buyer, this is what probably needs to be done within the first year. This is what needs to be done next two, three years. And these are projects that you're probably going to have to get to five to 10 years down the road. Then that buyer has a decision to make. Do I move forward with this transaction or I just, it's not worth it for me? So my question is, yeah. Is this college, we can get to the point where, you know, things that's going to start happening on our campus that we can't get to it. So that's the first thing. Let's examine. So the committee would be responsible for doing inventory, what needs to be done with the infrastructure of the college. Number two would be to examine the fixed variables, both long and short term expenses at the college. What are our expenses moving forward? You know, budget, obviously we balance our budget every year. But are we going to be able to finance some of these repairs that the college needs? And number three, which is the, will be the big one was identifying new resources to invent, to invest in the college infrastructure. But we, we need to talk about it. I guess with this committee, we're not going to put the, you know, the cart in front of the horse and try to figure out what we're going to do tonight. But if we move forward with this committee, I would imagine they're going to come back with some very hard decisions for this board to make, very hard decisions. And unfortunately, you know, sad to say, there was, you know, previous administrations and previous boards that kind of pushed this down the road and here we are. I don't want to be that board that's going to say, you know, get blamed for, you know, five years, 10 years from now that, hey, what were you thinking of? I think we need to really give this a hard consideration. I do, yes. There was, since that meeting, the November meeting, there was some things that brought to my attention, you know, how, you know, rightly so. You know, how to put it, this committee together. And you are right again, trustee Petrikov, that I was under the assumption that I've had discussion with many of my colleagues and President Cavalluna, and I was under the impression this is how we move forward. Nobody said, nope, that's not the way it works. We need to handle it this way. So yeah, let's do it the proper way if we're going to move forward. But I hope that kind of answers your question, trustee Petrikov.
Really quick, before we do that, President Cavalluna had just let me know that John McDonald had raised his hand. We'll take the question when we do the public comment. And if there's additional people, raise their hands. Maybe I've not seen it. I don't know if Ms. Dimitri or Ms. DeLonge or someone else could just let us know. And we'll make sure we get everyone, get to everyone when it, when it's time. Thank you. All right, trustee Petlicoff, sorry.
Okay, one, I sat through a retreat with Stan Jensen where we had a long Saturday of a well-developed infrastructure needs meeting a number of years ago. I don't know whether you were there or not and or if any other board trustees were there or not. And he had a lot of mostly wishful plans for what to do with the infrastructure needs. So number one, this isn't something that hasn't been considered, but yes, it hasn't been totally fleshed out. We are moving in pieces. Number two, I, I am still confused. A, I, I am always leery number one when we start to talk about 10 years out and all these kinds of things when there are so many variables, oh, many variables that can disrupt and change our direction for a variety of reasons. And when you start saying we're going to follow whatever this committee comes up with kind of thing. That's not what I was suggesting when I, because we always know it's got to be a recommendation, but it's going to end up being the board of the moment who is going to decide. And we don't even know who all the board members might be come. While I know for a fact 10 years from now, there isn't going to be many of these faces sitting there. So I, I, that's why I'm kind of conflicted with what this, what we're trying, attempting to do. And, and I, I wanted to be clear what we're attempting to do. I don't want to go in there and say, okay, well, we're just going to, and then you guys all go ahead. Cause I'm not asking somebody to participate on something where it then becomes a meeting of a free for all of everybody's personal agenda of what they think is required to, and, and what is it that we're protecting? Are we protecting the buildings? Are we protecting our financial resources? Are we looking for, I, I'm still at a loss. So if we're going to put a committee together, I, I, I would prefer to have, yes, we need to, A, by board bylaws, every board member should have the opportunity to raise their hand, say, I want to be a part of it or not. And we can have up to three board members participate, number one. So any three of us can, if they so choose, can ask to be on the committee. Number two, I do not want to put out invitations to the community until I have a clear understanding about what that request is, is going to be. So we need to have, and I, and I think we're being a little broad in our perspective of what we want done because I think we're, we do a budget. I mean, it's not like we're, we're not working on a budget every year. We do, we do have plans in place for what we're doing for our infrastructure needs that are, we have priorities. We know what's immediate. We know what we're working on with the IMP and with the, with the tech building and, and the grants we've, we've applied for and all of that. We know what needs work, the liberal arts building and all, and, you know, the bookstore or whatever you want to look at. So that's why I'm kind of confused as to the direction still. I don't have a clear understanding and I want to make sure that if we, we, first off, my understanding in November was that was, that was put under the request for future information items. That's why I, I didn't have questions then because I thought we were going to have this discussion then. I thought you were introducing it and then we would have a discussion. That's not what happened. What happened was all of a sudden the committee appeared. So that's why I said something about board protocol. Now I want to make sure that we do this appropriately, properly, that we're not repeating work that's already been done and or moving away from work that's been done. And throwing the baby out with the bathwater kind of efforts as well. So that's why I, I want to have, you know, we need to know who in the college needs to be involved. And I, I would just like a clearer picture of what the goal is of this subcommittee and, and does it need? My, my number one question, why do we need the community involved at this level for, if it's going to be infrastructure needs?
So trustee Barry, go on.
So why do we need the community members involved? I believe there are investors. The taxpayers, I believe that these buildings belong to them. And they have a certain responsibility to these buildings. You, you mentioned that there was some work done under, you know, former President Dr. Jensen. Then you also mentioned the liberal arts building. I've been hearing that the liberal arts building needs some attention for probably a good 15, 16 years. And I think there was a, there was, I don't know if it was a study or, you know, I don't know. I wasn't on the board. I think the only other colleague of ours was on the board was trustee McDonald. If I remember right, talking to, I forget who I talked to, that we found that we came up with a number. What would it take to, you know, if we had to raise the liberal arts building, what would it cost us to raise it and rebuild it? And I don't know, it's probably what, eight years ago, nine years ago? That number is probably up 25% now. Some of that equipment, some of those rooms in the liberal arts building are pretty much, pretty much looked the same when I was there and that was probably 40 plus years ago. So it's very concerning. Why, why, why am I taking classes? Why did I take classes at different institution and walk into a building where I'm like, oh, wow, you know, these students are lucky here. What's wrong with our students having the same, you know, classrooms, maybe the same resources, maybe the same, you know, equipment as other institutions? And that's just part of it. That's just part of it. Literally, literally, we're probably going to come up with, you know, that this campus is probably going to need not like next two, three, four years, but probably 10 plus years. We're probably going to need, you know, I'm not the expert, just looking at what previous reports came up with. We're probably going to need close to, if not more than $100 million. When do we get to this work? I mean, once we know from, from past experience, the last like about a year and a half ago, when we went up for the bond and the, the taxpayers, the investors, they came out very loud and clear and said, we don't want to see Band-Aids put on buildings anymore. We need to do something. I don't think they said, we'd want to give you money. They just said, we need, you know, what is it? What is it? You, you know, they want to see some brick and mortar. They want to see some investments going into, you know, the campuses. And if it's good for DPS, why is it good enough for Henry Ford College? So it's a simple question, simple question. Is this college going to be around 10, 15 years from now? I'm not going to be around. Most of us won't be around, at least not on this board. There's some young people still here. I don't think they'll still be serving on the, they might be. 10, 15 years from now, I'm an old guy. So I don't know if I'm even going to be around, but we owe it. We owe it to our students. We owe it to, I mean, that's, that question is like, why are the community members invited? They're, 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 they're the ultimate investors.
You're, you're, you're misreading what I'm saying when I'm asking that question. I'm asking, are we asking, are we putting together the right kind of committee? Are we looking more at a financial feasibility or infrastructure feasibility committee? Are we, I'm, I'm wondering what we're inviting people to? What are we asking them to invest their time in? Financial stability is a different problem than feasibility of infrastructure needs.
I think.
Trustee Barry, Petlicoff, if you can hold on for a second, I want to involve a couple of the other trustees. Trustee Moser, did you have your hand up?
I did. Yeah. I, I think it is very crucial and important to look forward for five years, 10 years and to look at the revenue streams and of the college and the issues that are pertaining to a community college at large. And to say those are the things or those are the recommendations that we need the board to look into, to making sure that we have a sustainable and a college that is going to be around. So it's, it's very important that we have a committee to look into this, that it's not only the board that dictates or tries to minimize the scope of the committee. Let the scope to be high ceiling to say, bring us even bold decisions, creative ideas. How do we expand the revenue for the college to raise that much capital? Because right now, I mean, from the lesson that we learned from 2019 bond, there is a sentiment of anti-tax. And let's be clear, Henry Ford College does get a good number of mills from Dearborn residents in the area of Dearborn Heights. But it's the highest in the state. And Henry Ford's problem is very unique that it has a very small tax base of Dearborn. So it is crucial that we need to really look forward, that we need to learn from our past. And we would not want to see another 2013 struggle again. That this college is going to be forward thinking, that it's going to have modern facilities. And let this committee look into all of the details and bring those recommendations to the board and the board can look into.
Asking too many questions.
Well, hold on a second. Trustee Watts also had her hand up.
So I think a few things. I think right now with COVID, a lot of the questions that we're currently asking might take place pre-COVID. But now with COVID, we're reimagining what education looks like. So if we're taking in the current model and saying what's it going to look like in 10 years? I think it's difficult because there's some things that we need to discuss and to take into account. Number one, we're seeing more of an emphasis on state and federal dollars coming to community colleges. I think number two is we need to look at the long-term job shortages and what jobs are going to be in demand in 10 years. I mean, there's a lot of unknown questions. So I think going forward that we have to think, yes, long-term, but we don't even know what edu, what our educational system is going to look like in five years, in 10 years. No one of us would have predicted that our kids would have been on Zoom right now. So I, you know, I, I enjoy the details of, you know, wanting to know the key components of this ad hoc committee. But again, it's a lot of unknowns. So.
And we've done things similar in the past when we did the P-12 bond, they gave us an inventory of, of the short-term projects that need to be done, the long-term projects that need to be done. So trustee Petlicoff, if, if Dr. Jensen had brought something to our attention a few years ago, we could probably dust it off, look over it, see if some of those things are still out there needing attention. And how quickly they, do they need attention?
I'm sure Vice President Sakowski probably has that information.
Right, right.
There when we did.
So I, I wonder if one of the things that's hard for us is that timeframe that we've got attached to this. What if we weren't saying more than 10 years out? What if we were just looking past the next strategic plan? We were saying five or 10 years. We'll do the strategic plan. It'll have all the normal components. It might have one or two infrastructure projects, but we also know we're just starting the IMP and the tech building. So we've got a couple of big ones. They're going to take a year or two, I believe, to get rolling. So there might be some things that would be in that four to six-year time range, whether it's liberal arts or anything else. So maybe it, that can be an easier thing for us to get our, our arms around is, is what's the medium term, the five to 10-year timeframe that we need to be looking at?
And what's the, what's the main question? What are we putting this particular committee together for that?
Well, trustee Barry mentioned those three items. So maybe we take a couple of minutes and, and look at those three goals and flesh it out a little bit to see if, if we need any clarification on those. Trustee Barry, do you want to read the first of those three items again?
The first one is to inventory the physical infrastructure of the college, obviously to try to figure out what's needed.
Well, that's a fairly straightforward.
Real quick, trustee McDonald, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That is, as trustee Petlicoff said, that is straightforward. And I think that is information that can be derived from the college itself. From the information we have, we know our buildings, we know what we need. Community members would not have that information. So I think this is something that could be in-house that we could, you know, so we can get a grasp on what we're, we're dealing with.
What's the, any, any questions on that? Is that clear as to what the first item would be? To do an inventory of, of the current infrastructure? Trustee Watts?
I guess I would say, you know, I haven't obviously been privy or I haven't looked at that yet, but is there any way that maybe we can take it where it's like a, you know, like a like, you know, trustee Barry, what you were saying, like, you know, this might be something that you want to address, you know, like you were saying as a Realtor, like this is something you want to address now, maybe like in a year, maybe in five years, just to kind of give us an idea as to the longevity of those projects or short-term versus long-term?
Well, from what I'm hearing Chair Thorpe say, that is that, you know, part of our, like I said, this can be on two tracks we're moving forward. Strategic plan and maybe this committee. So if the strategic plan is going to deal with our needs for the next two to four years, the next two to three years, yeah, then we're looking at maybe a little bit longer. You know, what is it that we need to be looking at? You know, obviously if we decided, if the seven of us decided we want to do something with the liberal arts building right now, we don't have the resources to do that. But if that's something that needs to be done and there's some other things, you know, I will have to look at their report and maybe look at the new inventory. I'm sure there's things have changed the last six, seven years. So maybe. So maybe this, maybe, maybe eight years from now, this is what we need to do, and how do we get there? And if I can skip, if it's okay with Chair Thorpe, I can skip to number three right now. And say, okay, we need to identify new resources to invest in this college. So why would you want? Community members, especially community members who are pretty active in the community.
No, that, that's appropriate to have.
Let me finish talking, please. Let me finish talking. Uh, why would you want those community members and, you know, I was kinda hoping that would be community members that are, you know, very involved and very active. So, once we make that decision, obviously, we're not gonna be able to come up with fifty, sixty million dollars. To do what we need to do if we decided to fix that, you know, raise that liberal arts building, build a new one. But those community members would become ambassadors. So we need to, we need to, that's number three, and we'll get back to number two.
Trustee Barry?
Identify, I'm sorry.
No, I was, I was just gonna say that when we have that, that inventory of items. I would fully expect that in the strategic plan, they're gonna cherry pick some of those items and cover it in that timeframe. But that we would still have those other items. So it could be the idea that we need to get new carpet or new lighting or some. Smaller project, right? But we also know that maybe the, the HVAC system in a building is gonna need to be completely redone in a little bit longer time, right? So we're gonna have both of those.
Correct.
I believe you'd wanna have, you would take that information back to the full committee, which would include the community members, so then they can. Get a feel for what is gonna be needed, no different than what we did with P twelve, when we showed them the, the full inventory, when we had them touring the buildings, so they could see it. Get their feedback as to what might be some, some ways, and they could also then be our champions out there in the community. Of how are we gonna do the financing? Whether it's what through bond, millage, the normal ways, or some new revenue stream? I went to a, a conference with, um, Dr. Benson several years ago now, three, four years ago, probably. And I remember hearing from one college that took a historic building in their town. Renovated it as a hotel, and they used their, their hospitality school, and it, it's an income stream for them. Now, I'm not suggesting that for us, but that's outside the box, that the college is, is using some space, they're helping their students, and it's benefiting them. So I don't think we can get all those feelings just from the college community. We need some outside voices to give us some crazy ideas that just might work.
And I'm not saying we don't. I'm just saying I need to understand the question that's being framed here and what we're going to be asking of them. That's all I'm asking. I've never stated that I don't want community members involved, and I don't want it to be interpreted that way.
No, it's just a question of when is the appropriate time to bring them in?
And what's, and what's the question we're going to be tasking them with, so that they have an understanding of, of wh- wh- where they come in? To play.
Trustee Watts, did your hand go up again? I'm sorry.
Uh, no, I think it was just to go back to, you know, when we were saying with step number one, when we inventory the college, that we can then. Like I said, go in there and find out what it's, what's an immediate, what's a, you know, three to five years, what's a five to seven, and then what's a seven post, just to kinda get an understanding as to. Like what trustee Barry was saying in terms of resources. Um, so that was just my suggestion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I, I can just give a little bit of background on some of the issues the board is discussing here. And of course, I'll leave it to the board to decide how and where this discussion goes, but, um. The college is responsible for providing a capital outline plan, um, to the state legislature every year, and, and, and this information is all available on the website for the public to see, and I will. I'll send an email to the entire board outlining this, but, um. The, the, the last update we did on this capital outline plan was November one of twenty twenty, so about four months ago. And in that document, it outlined some of the things the board is talking about now. Questions and, and ideas about where we would like to invest in our physical plant. An outline of our deferred maintenance, which means how much, uh, would it cost to bring everything up to? Where we'd want it to be right now to fix everything, because as you know, and trustee Barry has noted. Every public institution carries a deferred maintenance list, as we do also. And then on top of, on top of that, there is a link to what former President Jensen commissioned and delivered to the board. In January of two thousand fifteen, which was a, a, a very long and detailed, uh, analysis of the entire physical plant. And then also plans, uh, for up to, I believe, eight, maybe ten years of changes to the campus that he recommended. Believe this is, I wasn't there, of course, but I suspect this is the report that trustee Petlicoff references, having seen. Um, it's also still public, and, um, there are figures there to trustee Barry's question about the cost of those things when they were developed in two thousand fifteen. Um, of course, this is all just information for anyone who is, um, wrestling with the issues the board is discussing. But, uh, the, the college did contract with Stan Tech, an, an outside firm to do that analysis, and, um. I will send this report, uh, both the Stan Tech report, which is over a hundred and sixty pages. And the, the, the place where any, any citizen can go and see all of the year after year updates to the legislature on our capital outline plan, which. Deals with the first thing trustee Barry was talking about. Not so much the other things, but that first thing.
Thank you, President Cavalluna. So we've talked about the first item, and it seemed like the board was in agreement that the inventory of the, the physical. Infrastructure of the plant is gonna be useful. Trustee Barry, what was the second item again?
Says examine, examine the fixed variables, both long and short-term expenses of the college. So you, 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 you need to take a look at and see what are your expenses, because that would lead us to number three. That's why I jumped ahead and went to number three. Uh, do we believe that we can just find one form of, you know, funding for what we need to do? Of course not. It's gonna have to take multiple resources. So is it a bond? Is it a, is it a sinking fund, you know, which so some institutions use? But, uh, and, and again, I'm saying, I'm not saying to have the community members come in here and actually walk through and figure out what the bill, you know, what the buildings need. That's something that would come in from the administration. But eventually, those community members need to walk through after they get to report and see what is it that the administration is talking about. Uh, at that point, if we decide like, okay, that's, that's twenty, twenty twenty-one right now, and maybe a project for twenty twenty-eight should be. Whatever we decide we wanna do, uh, where do we, where do we find the money? Uh, those, like you said, uh, uh, the, the community members would become our ambassadors to go out there, and you know what? Yeah, I, in twenty twenty-one, I sat in this room and I heard what the college needs, and this was their wish list. And, uh, we kinda cut that list in half and figured out that, uh, if we get the wish list, what is it that absolutely needs to be done, and we go from there. But you have to have that discussion. Maybe, obviously, I'm not the expert on exactly what we, you know, on how to move forward on this. I did reach out to, uh, President Cavalluna last year about this time before we put everything on pause. And said, maybe I need to sit down with somebody in the administration to help me put this, you know, together. And, you know, we were pretty much both on the same page, but obviously, uh, twenty, you know, COVID hit, and we put everything on a pause. But this is a discussion, th- th- this is exactly, we're under, we're, we're under discussion items right now. This is exactly what we're doing. This is a discussion that needs to continue. Not saying, let's just, let's just get this done now and, you know, move forward, whatever, but this is a discussion that needs to happen, and this is a discussion that needs to continue. And whatever the committee comes back with, I think we should, you know, obviously, the administration and the committee would put everything in, you know, on a priority list, what needs to be done sooner than later.
So trustee Barry?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna try to summarize it. Let me know if, if I'm on, online with this. We need to know what our needs are. How much do we have available to fund those needs, and if we need some additional ways to find the capital, cover those needs?
I, I mean, thank you. It doesn't get any simpler than that, you know, that's.
Oh, I like to keep things simple.
Thank you. You know, simple is good sometimes.
All right, trustee Petlicoff.
Could I recommend them that we don't call this a financial sta? Could I recommend that we don't call this a financial stability committee then, because it gives a wrong impression of what the question is?
Would you have a recommendation for another title?
Uh, um.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, i- i- this is more a feasibility study. Um.
Sustainability study.
Well, sustainability tends to, you, you Google sustainability, guess what you get? Everything about, uh, green.
Environment and green, I understand, but.
That's why, that's why.
Necessarily. Yeah, trustee Barry.
Yeah, that's why I didn't just say sustainability. I remember it was one time where, you know, former board member, trustee, trustee Lane said she wanted to look at the environmental sustainability. That's why I put the word financial stability in front of that, because that's exactly what we're looking for. My, my question to everybody. Is, is this college gonna be around ten, fifteen years from now? We're making investments into this college, uh, with our energy master plan, with, with other things, twenty-five years down the road. My question is simple. I mean, we almost lost this college, I'm sorry to say, but we almost just lost this college not too long ago. Is this college gonna be around? There's other things that, you know, we need to look at, uh, uh, maybe, maybe a program review. Where can we save money?
But tha- tha- that's why I'm saying we're getting into other questions then, and that's where I'm confused. Because now we're going away from infrastructure needs and, and revenue resources for that. Now we're talking about, is this co- college gonna be here in twenty years, which is a whole different scenario?
I don't understand what do you mean by that?
We're throwing too many different. Questions into the pool.
I, I would agree with this.
It's all.
The, the, the idea, trustee Barry, of, of what programs would be something that would be more on the strategic plan side. Than, than the, um, where do we have the classes? I, I deal like, we know we need to redo the liberal arts building, but we're not really saying we need to redo it because of these particular classes that are gonna be in it.
That would fall under short-term budgeting. That would, like you said, that would be no strategic plan, but. I don't know. Any other thoughts out there?
I, I think what you're saying is, you wanna make sure that the money that's being put into this infrastructure isn't gonna be wasted.
Nobody wants, exactly, nobody wants.
That we didn't just update everything, make it look beautiful, but we're not gonna be here. Trustee McDonald?
And, and not just if it's going to be around, but also if it's going to be serving the purpose that it needs to be serving in fifteen years from now. So looking ahead. To what we need to be to meet the moment when it comes.
Which is along the lines of what trustee Watts said earlier, and it's also the inherently impossibility of what will the programs look like, so. We need to be flexible, but again, that's gonna be on this committee, uh, for them to come into us with recommendations. Any additional questions? Do, do we have a good idea of what this group would be tasked with? Now, from a timeline, or a time standpoint, sorry, trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I'm, um, the group itself tasked with, yeah, I'm still a little confused, because I'm thinking of just the first part, the infrastructure. Portion. That would not be tasked to the group, correct?
Well, uh, President Cavallota, your, you would have, the administration would be able to gather the information. So it could support the group. Correct?
Yeah, yes. It, no matter what the board directs as to the information it wants, I will marshal the resources to the board or the board's committee to have the data it needs.
So trustee McDonald, does that answer your question? That, that's gonna be kinda happening in the background, so we're ready to give that to the group once it's formed.
Right, that's what I was looking for. And I do recall that, um, board retreat back in two thousand fifteen. And the report that came out, and it went from. What our current needs, again, this is already six years old, but it went from what our needs were to the fantastical. And including then the fantastical were ways to raise money from the fantastical. So I remember this. So it kinda had the similar components. So I think it might be a good idea to just retake a look at that, um. Not as a place to begin, but just kind of, uh, maybe to get some juices flowing and to, uh. Thoughts and things that, uh, we've already tackled and where we might be going. And also to look at the revel- relevance, if this is what we looked at five or six years ago. How on spot were we then as to where we are now? Do you understand what I'm saying? So that's, I think it might be hooves a little bit, just to take a look at that, not as a starting off point, but just to kinda, uh, generate some additional ideas.
Trustee Watts?
Well, and I think on top of that, you know, when we're looking at the number one, um, the infrastructure, right? So looking at what we know we need now versus the production, do we have any data? Or maybe something that you guys have already seen that, um, like trustee McDonald was saying, that would support what? Uh, what jobs would be out there for five to seven years from now? What, what would those needs look like? Because if we're looking for infrastructure, then we wanna make sure that we plan accordingly.
Agreed.
Okay, going back to. Timeline on things. I'm one that likes to get things going and not spend a, a lot of time and be able to roll with things, um. What I would ask is, uh, as trustee Petlicoff said, first off, we are, we are able to have up to three members of our board. To serve on this group. Would anyone volunteer to serve on the group?
I'll serve on it.
Okay, now Ford hands went up, so if I, if I, my timing is right, it was trustee Petlicoff, and then I think it went to trustee Moses. And I think trustee Dan Broshu got in slightly before trustee Watts.
He did.
Okay. All right. Uh, so you three would be comfortable helping out with this?
Sure. Yep, I have a very light committee assignment roster, so I'm good.
Okay, well, badges is going into the official minutes of this meeting that trustee Petlicoff needs more work. All right, trustee McDonald?
When we do get to, uh, assigning or, or inviting people from, um, outside, I would like to invite former trustee Lane.
You're able to, do we need to, as a group though, say who we'd want to talk to? I don't remember us, did we share the names, the people we were gonna put on the presidential search?
No.
I think we reached out to them, and then we reported back once we had their, they're okay?
Well, then I'll strike that.
You can still talk with her.
I will.
Saying that.
Um. And if she shows up, we'll know who talked to her.
Okay.
The other thing.
But we have to have a timeline before I can do that anyway.
We're, we're asking each of us to consider nominating one person, but we're not gonna require that. Is that all right? If.
I think so.
I mean.
As long as everybody has the opportunity.
Everyone has the opportunity, but if one of us chooses not to, that's okay too. All right, we're, we're in agreement with that one looks like. Would it be possible for us to say that in the next two weeks, so by the end of this month, we are able to get a name back? To this group? You think two weeks is enough time for us to do that?
I know when I ask people, they want some kind of idea about what they're committing to. Are we gonna have something to give them as a timeframe? You know, you're gonna meet once a month, you're gonna meet for a year, you're gonna meet, you know, on this topic.
What I'm thinking, and we're gonna kinda cross the parallel tracks here, and I apologize for that. Former trustee me came up with not having us go through strategic planning during, uh, COVID and the pandemic, but. We are probably four or five months past when that happened. Trustee Barry, I mean. If you recall, when you had, we're a lot further down this road than we were. What I'm thinking is, what if we started the idea of strategic planning happening the second half of this year? I don't wanna have us going without a strategic plan for too long, and I think that if we could have something ready to roll once we get into twenty twenty-two for trustee McDonald, when she is. Serving as, as, uh, the chair, that would be good. Um, with that in mind, I'd wonder if we try to have this group have most of its work done by the end of this year. Um, with that in mind, I'd wonder if we try to have this group have most of its work done by the end of this year. Would that be too audacious?
No, but we still have to come up with some kind of um, what they were committing to with their time on a weekly, monthly cycle. And that's why I was asking, what is the real question we're going to be working on? Because that will kind of give you an understanding about how much time you're going to need to ask people to commit.
Trustee Pelishkov, do you recall when we did the P12 on two years ago, that giant subcommittee? How often we had them meeting?
I think it was, I think it was twice a month, at least in the beginning.
Trustee Barry, trustee McDonald, do you recall?
That sounds about right, twice a month in the beginning, then as they got moved forward, they started breaking out into the different committees. Yeah, so.
What do you think about that, that they'd possibly be meeting twice a month for the first two months or so? And then it would become maybe monthly? Does that sound like a, a right amount of time that you think it would take for this?
To have it finalized by the end of the year? Yeah, unless, unless people start to go off track, which happens. Um, yeah, I think, I think it's doable. And you can always readjust if necessary.
Is the board comfortable with the idea of us trying to, to ask this committee to have everything done to us by the end of this year?
I think that's doable.
That's a fair amount of time.
Okay. All right, and then what we'd really be looking at is that this committee would be really starting, call it the middle of May, I'm sorry, March. So they'd have about nine months to get these points completed.
Who, who are we turning uh, like names to? Is it to you or?
Yeah, for right now, turn the names into me.
But that's after you've made initial contact with them?
Yeah, go ahead, make contact with them, get their agreement. Give me back the names. This isn't something that we need to vote on, correct? We don't need to vote on the representatives. So that way, we'd be able to have those names, then go back to president Cavalluna. He would have the names of the um, the college community that would also serve on this alongside these uh, the citizens and can get things started. And uh, I suppose we would need to have a uh, subcommittee chair on this one then. Uh, that would be able to report back to the board at each of the monthly meetings. So between uh, trustees, Petlicov, the Ambrosio and Moses. Uh, would one of you want to be the one that reports back to us?
I'll volunteer.
I do too.
Okay, so what's, what's our uh, what's our process when we've got two people volunteering? Do you guys get to share it?
I like what you did, the first three raised their hand, we're on committee, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think trustee Moses jumped the gun.
All right, now, and then the, so trustee Moses, what you'd be doing then is just coming back and giving us the reports.
Absolutely.
You'll make the formal report to the board, but I'm going to assume that there's going to be other information that's gathered from this committee that'll be shared to the full board, present. And if you could just include that in your um, notes for the president to us.
Yeah, I have some questions about that, but I'll let the board continue its discussion here. But I, I, I do want to make sure I understand the board's direction on a couple of planes.
And, and I would say that uh, president Cavalluna needs to understand who he, from his team would be the best fit, and do we have committee members from uh the others, other employees, and I mean, what, what kind of size are we looking at?
Well, if we have us, three board members and potentially seven community members, I don't think we're going to get to seven, but that's, that's 10 right there. So obviously, yes, of course, uh, me personally, I think we would, would like to see somebody from the administration, somebody from, you know, faculty, full-time faculty, possibly a student. But that's, I'll leave that up to president Cavalluna, that's his side of the, the committee that he gets to work on.
And I would expect president Petlicov that, I'm sorry, trustee Petlicov, that president Cavalluta will be bringing in different people from the administration at different times, uh, based on their specialty. That they, they have more knowledge of the infrastructure of the college or of the, the finances of college, things like that. They won't necessarily met, be members of this, but they'll be reporting to the committee. Trustee Watts, did you have a question?
Well, I think we touched on this, I mean, if we're going to be asking uh, community members to see if they would join. I think we need to come up with some sort of name and some sort of structure. So I think the more details that we can work out now, um, I think the better. So that going forward, we're all on the same page of saying that we have a name, we have a committee, this is how many, you know, this is the structure, the timeframe that we want. And these are the three goals, um, I, you know, I have the three goals written down, um. Again, just to be, to be clear with details going forward.
No, one thing I'm, I've come to realize after serving on the board for a few years is that people in academics love to have their little names for everything, and I don't understand what most and for. So I'm sure, I'm sure president Cavalluna and his team could come up with some strange acronym that would be very fitting for this. So, um, but in the meantime, we could still let them know the what, the what behind this, the why. And let them know that this is going to be a commitment of a few hours a month or about nine months. Any additional comments? Are we, trustee Petlicov?
Well, I would like, whenever you do ask community members, usually you have some kind of missive, a letter from the college or an email that you can give them that says, we, we would, you know, you've been invited to participate on blah, blah, blah. And, you know, so that they know what the objective and the timeframe is and all of that. Um, so I think that if we want to do this within a couple of weeks, we better make sure we give a decent directive to president Cavalluna that he can um put that together, that we can carry forward to whoever we might ask in the community. Because you might ask, have to ask a couple of people before you get somebody to say yes.
Sorry, go on, trustee Barry.
I think the way we handled that with the presidential search was, you know, you talk to the people that you think might be interested. Then you brought, we brought the name forward to the search uh, firm. And at that point, there was a thank you letter that went out and letting the community members know what they're getting into. So you, I, I think it'd be very difficult to accomplish something like ASAP to send out as an invite. Because we all know, we all have a good idea who we're probably going to be talking to, and if they're in, then, you know, turn in the name to Chair Thorpe and him forward it to president Cavalluna, and I'm sure somebody at that point will send.
And trustee Pelishkov, I know that we didn't have that during the presidential search, but it was pretty clear what we were asking them to do. But we were still getting the questions of how much time is this going to be? And, and so I understand what you're saying, but it might be tough for us to have everything written completely, but president Cavalluna, you've got an idea of what we've been talking about so far. You'd probably have somebody sketch something out as to what this committee is going to be tasked with. And you had said, you had had some questions for us, you want to go through that now?
Yeah, they were basically what you were just starting to segue towards, Mr. Chairman, it was what next steps and expectations for my office. And so what I think I'm hearing is that um, trustee Barry has outlined three goals. Uh, I can memorialize those and um, also craft an invitation to uh, any prospective committee members that outlines what the board here has basically come to consensus on as to the time commitment. I could also identify the trustees who are on the committee. And I could circulate that uh, draft to you all, and then um that's, that's one proposal I've just got, kind of thinking how I can meet your needs there. How does that sound so far? And then I've got some other questions. All right, so I, I can get that draft to you um, quickly, uh, by the information you, you all have coalesced around here. The next question is um, your, your request for information and reporting lines. Um, the board uh, has committees that exist now, and they are populated by the chair, as you all know. And each of them have a chair, and each of them have their own kind of flow uh, that works. Um, but in most of them, the chairman of that committee works with myself or one of my staff members to set dates of, of dates of meetings, coordinate location and time, and then set agendas and run those meetings. Um, we can do it that way, uh, or we could do it differently. But um, I do, I do want to get a clear direction from the board as to how the board wants the administration to interact with this committee. And who is, who, who I should be reporting to on this work? Because I, I, I just have to say, um, one of the things I can think that if I'm one of the members of this committee and, and my proposed draft for you all will note the questions, I can kind of envision it will say the primary question is, will this college exist 10 to 15 years from now? And then underneath that question, we are wondering about one, two, and three. If I'm on that committee, the first thing I'm going to want to spend uh, my time is to understand the college. What are, what are the things that we do? How much do those things cost? Wha- what are the things that, a- and these are all basic questions that come up with strategic planning that, Mr. Chairman, you have also identified will be running parallel to this. Um, and that strategic plan is something that I, as a president, report directly to the entire board on. And I have no lack of clarity on that. I just want to make sure I'm understanding exactly what the reporting line and the expectations are for my office on this other committee. Um, so that I don't, um, so that I don't leave any trustees scratching their head as to who I'm talking to about what.
Trustee Barry.
The way uh, the way I visioned this is that uh, there's a committee chair representing the board. I, I assumed it wouldn't be you, but it may be somebody from your administration, will also co-chair this committee. That person would report to you. Uh, and between that person, yourself, and I believe it would be trustee Moses at this point, there'll be some discussions going on. Uh, trustee Moses would report to the chair, and the chair would send information to the rest of us. I think that should be, I, I, that's the way I visioned the line of communication would be. So we're not going to be taking up your time talking, trying to get us updated on what's going on. Uh, that's, that's going to be on the, you know, trustee Moses, and it'll be a discussion with Chair Thorpe.
Um, I will tell you that in the 10 years I've been on the board, um, committee chairs own our reporting vehicle. And the full committee of uh, trustees helps to set the agendas. And so that conversation would be had, um, and I would assume uh, that we could have that conversation at any given meeting as we move forward. So that whatever other committee members are, have questions about, we would see whether they needed to be incorporated into an agenda for the following meeting. I just wouldn't want to leave it to one person to um, set the agenda every uh, meeting. And or um, because the rest would be left out of um, input.
Trustee Barry.
Yeah, I wasn't saying that uh, that communication would be, you know, I was referring to like in between meetings, something important comes up. Uh, president Cavalluna would share with uh, trustee Moses, and trustee Moses would chair with our leader this year, which would be uh Chair Thorpe. So tha- that's the way you can fill information, but the obvious is obvious at every board meeting. The committee chair would report it and tell your board. And so if Chair, I'm imagining if Chair Thorpe had some information for me, and if I had any questions, I would have no problem reaching out to trustee Moses. But yeah, you're right, trustee Petlicov, that, that at the board meeting, that's up to the committee chair to report to all of us at the same time. Just in between meetings, we can use that vehicle, because in the beginning, it's going to be moving pretty quickly, especially if the committee is meeting twice a month.
What I would say is that while the subcommittee would be able to report at the full board meeting, Cavalluna can include updates in his monthly board, which fall two weeks between. So about every two weeks there, you're going to get some information. And then um, communications regarding the committee between trustee Moses and, and president Cavallino or the other subcommittee members, uh, just include me on it. Just CC me in, in those communications, just so I, I know what's going on. And then I can report out to the rest of the board if need be between other updates. So president Cavalluna, does, was that everything that you had, had the questions on?
Yeah, and I'll repeat them just to this clarity, uh, or need for correction in my understanding. I will propose to the board and circulate by email a document explaining um the committee's charge and the subparts of questions. The current committee's population, which are trustees, Moses, the Ambrosio and Petlicov. That the committee is seeking uh, membership by others. And that membership would involve up to two meetings a month for the next 10 months. And that yeah, I think that, that, that's the language. And I have to say, I haven't had any strikes of genius on the name of this group. Um, I, I frankly, I would respectfully ask the board to use its um, political acumen for, for this tough call. But um, uh, trustee Dorf's right, I mean, you give us a chance, we'll do an acronym, but um so, so does, aside from the bad joke at the end of that summary, does that sound like, and by the way, add me add to that, that um do I hear that uh, trustee Moses will be the chair of this committee? And if so, then I'll be working with that chair, trustee Moses, to set the date of these meetings and communicate with the whole board through trustee Moses.
The only other thing that trustee Barry had said is if you want to designate somebody from the college, president Cavalluna to serve as a, a co-chair. Uh, and then that way trustee Moses can be uh, reporting back to the board, but you can have somebody else that's, that's running things on, on your side. So if you want to consider that.
Yep, then, so I'm, uh, that's how I'll proceed, and um, I think I understand.
All right, so if we're all clear, the next step for the board members will be to talk to someone in the community that you think would be a good fit to serve on this committee. And if they are willing to serve, please send their name over to me. I'd ask if you can have the names back to me before the end of this month. Thank you, everyone, for your time on this discussion, and thank you for so many hands going up when we asked for volunteers to serve on the committee. It's good to know that people want to get involved. Next item, please.
Next item is action items, um, but we have citizen participation. Um, do we do citizen participation first?
Yes, if we can do so.
Citizen participation, any member of the public who wishes to submit a written request to provide a public statement during the public comment portion of the board meeting will provide the electronic request to Almosip, M A, A D E L at h f c c dot edu by seven, 10 P M on January, it should be February 15th.
Today, February 15th.
Right, public meeting emails will be um, read by a designated board member. So the comment might be heard by those electronically attending this meeting. The board rules uh, for the content and length of the public statements remain as if the state, the meeting were held or was held in person. I don't have any emails that were directed to me as public comment. But are we opening public comment for attendees in this meeting?
Before we open it for attendees, um, Ms. Demetri or Ms. DeLong, I just want to confirm that we had none that were sent in.
None were sent in.
None were sent in.
All right, then we can go to uh the public that's in our, our live meeting right now.
That, that would be Mr. John McDonald.
All right.
Okay, if we can unmute him.
He's ready to go.
Good evening and it's been a very informative, informative evening. I just want to make a few observations. First of all, while many of you will not be around in 10 years, I will be. And it's one of Doc, President Cavalluna's great wishes that I be here in 10 years. I think that was the wish. Um, couple of observations, we've gone through in the last decade or so. A predictable um predictive, excuse me, a predictable crisis and unpredictable crisis. The predictable, predictable crisis was the bankruptcy, near bankruptcy of the institution. That was predictable. Three years prior to it, at the request of certain administrators who were worried about their employment, I approached three board members. Indicated to them the increasing, the increasing student debt debt was going to reach crisis within about two years, three years, four years, in that range. Uh, nothing was done by that board, nothing. Until we hit crisis. Now, it seems to me that we had an auditor then that should have caught it. I'm not saying boards should be aware of what went on, but there was an auditor that didn't catch it. It was predictable. Money was being spent on uh admitting students who could not pay and will not, would not pay uh their tuition. And that's what President did of the crisis, a predictable, predictable event. And now recently, we're in our second crisis, COVID, unpredictable event. And the, and the college has struggled mightily to deal with it. Doctor, uh, Mr. Cavalluna has been very, a very good leader in that regard. And I guess I bring those up because 10 years, eight years is a long period of time. And so some of you have observed, you don't know what's going to happen during that period of time. You can't make commitments that are that far out in my mind. Um, and it's been a discussion primarily this evening of infrastructure needs. The whole nature of pedagogy may change over 10 years. It's already changed dramatically. There will be pressures to have more and more delivery online from state, from feds, because it's cheaper than bricks and mortar. And more and more research will be accomplished to provide what is now very difficult to provide remotely, in person. Programs will change. Um, and um the needs of the college, yes, they will change, but it's impossible, impossible to predict. I've been in enough contract negotiations where boards have found it difficult to predict what's going to happen in two or three years in a contract that expires. I guess my last point is, I would not publicly talk about whether the college is going to be here, whether it's going to exist in 10 years. Because that has an impact today on people thinking, hey, this place is shaky. Why should I commit to that place? Why should I commit tuition? Why should I commit taxes? Now you may think it, as my mother would say, but you can't say it. Uh, I thought a lot, but I never said it. Didn't have enough courage uh to say it. But um we uh I think it's wise what uh Mr. Hussein Barry has brought up. There's some things to look at. Um, but I think it ought to be very clear that this, a 10-year period, an eight-year period, you can set some goals, you can set some parameters. But um everything's still up in the air. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. McDonald. Trustee Barry.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. McDonald. And I, I do remember the discussions that were had uh 10 years ago. As soon as I got on the board, I welcomed, I always welcomed your uh, your wisdom. And uh you know, this was not, this wasn't something that the board didn't act on. Uh, we did, within 11 months, we did act on it and moved in a different direction. And that's pretty much what saved the college. So, yeah. I always, when I talk to my former colleagues and I talk to community members that kind of understood what was going on and you know, a good friend, God bless his soul, Sir Michael Berry was involved to get information over to me and uh uh, yeah, you were very, very instrumental 10 years ago and I will go ahead and say it, saving this college. But uh, yeah, you, you're probably right. Maybe we can think it, but we shouldn't say it. But uh, that's what got us in trouble 10 years ago. That's what got us in trouble 10 years ago is nobody wanted to face the music. Nobody wanted to talk about it. And that's the only reason I use those words that get my colleagues' attention. That's all. Thank you.
And if we could unmute Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I'm not really speaking about steps taken when the crisis hit. Uh, they were important steps. A lot of people made sacrifices and the board acted to save the college. I'm indicating that three to four years before that, the board was well aware of the problem that was coming up and could have taken steps to stop it and didn't do it. It's not the board that got stuck with the problem. It's the board that was in place before it hit. We hit bankruptcy or near bankruptcy. Thank you.
And I think one of our hopes is that with this group, that we're able to catch things a little bit quicker. So we don't end up in that, that situation. But I also agree with what Mr. McDonald said. I wouldn't use the, the question of, are we still going to be here? Let's assume we're going to be here. It's just what are we going to look like and how to make sure that it's relevant. Next item, please.
Special consideration of an item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will explode them or exclude them from the action below.
I was going to just have a comment on action item five, but uh are there any other action items that are going to be questions on or that would need to be pulled? All right, I'm not seeing any. The trustee Mosip, if you could.
Move to approve action items number one through five as recommended in this agenda.
So moved. Support.
We had a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Petlicoff. Uh, trustee Barry.
Yes, sir. Uh, I want to refer to action item number five. Uh, President Cavalluna, I am so thankful for this move on your part. I think that's going to serve us well. Uh, this is a great organization. I'm referring to the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments Delegate and alternate delegate appointments. Uh, trustee McDonald and I had a conversation earlier. And honestly, we just assumed Henry Ford College was part of this great organization. This is the go-to, this is the go-to organization in southeastern Michigan for data and information and anything that you need. Uh, looking at the list of uh, of the other community colleges, uh, I mean, different public schools through Wayne Risa is part of that organization. Almost all the municipalities in Wayne County. So whoever directed you to go in that direction, I am very, very thankful and I'm very thankful for that decision you made. No question, just a comment.
Any other comments before I have mine? I was just going to share with the board, though my name is down as delegate uh from talking with President Cavalluna. We needed somebody on the board to be the delegate and then that we can have the, the alternate. Uh, so we just said that let's have the chair, at least for this year, serve as the, the delegate. Um, I may attend one or two of the meetings, uh, but my expectation is that President Cavalluna will the college. That was my only comment. Any further comments before we go ahead, then I will call for a roll call vote. Trustee Mosip.
Sure. Trustee DeAmbrosio.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mosip, yes. Trustee Petlicoff.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thorpe.
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
Seeing none, we can move on.
Board Committee Reports.
I will comment that I think this is the first meeting since we formalized the subcommittees. And we were talking earlier about the ad hoc, but our standing subcommittees have now been formed. Uh, so as needed, uh, they will be asked to uh report actions. Thanks. Next item.
Request for information or future uh agenda items.
Everyone must want to get out and shovel snow or build a snowman. Moving to the next item.
Board Member Commentary.
Trustee Barry.
Yes, I'm now looking forward to going out to shovel snow. Even I did most of it earlier. But you know what? Uh, yeah, thank you, Rhonda, uh, on, on most of our social media. I picked up on a story and it was also reported in the news. One of our students uh put us on a national stage. I'm referring to uh engineering student Ali Hamdun, uh mathematics major. Uh, he's part of the mathematics league. Uh, I guess he had a national competition and he scored very well. I don't have exactly how well he did. I'm not going to sit here and try to skim. I should have done that earlier. But uh, what's so important is he, seventh, thank you trustee Watts. Yes, you're right. I thought I did say that. I still, anyone misquoted. And I'm looking at it right now, this, yeah, seventh nationally. Uh, more, just as important, he pointed out uh, an instructor, a math instructor that I think should go into records. And it's Mr. Michael Zalzali uh for working very hard with, with the team. So uh, there was some money that was awarded to Mr. Hamdun. And he pretty much said that uh he's going to spend it in the bookstore. So that's money coming back to the college. So uh, when he graduates from Henry Ford College, he plans a continuous education at Wayne State University. So that was nice. That was nice to see Henry Ford College represented on a national stage. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any additional comments? President Cavalluna, did you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I appreciate the board's um review of and approval of two new teammates that I'm happy to say have been um watching and enjoying, I'm sure, the spirited board that they will now serve. Uh, there are two people that I'm looking forward myself to meet and I really wish we could be doing this in our uh boardroom where we would be having them stand in the back of the room and wave. But um because we can, I still just want to acknowledge their coming out of the team. Uh, one is Mark Tate, who will be the Assistant Director of Employee and Labor Relations in the Office of Human Resources. Um, you are aware that he has a, a impressive background of both education and service in the armed services. And um, we won't hold it against him that he's a lawyer, it looks like. Um, there, uh, Mr. Tate, I'm a lawyer too. And I've, I've seemed to convince the board that I'm not pure evil. So welcome aboard. And uh, I'm also happy to recognize and welcome our other new teammate, Melissa Kurtz, who will be an accountant in the financial services area. And uh, she also um has an impressive pedigree of accomplishment and education behind her. So I, at the, because I can't have them stand and wave at you here now in our, in our room, I just wanted to say their names and say, welcome aboard. And I look forward to meeting both of you. And I know that they'll serve you, board members, with honor and distinction. So thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I have future meeting, future meeting dates, um Monday, March 8th, 2021, P12 Board of Education Meeting, 7 P M at the Administrative Center, Center in the Frank Francie Boardroom, following the guidelines of the state law and virtually available live for viewing via YouTube, the YouTube channel for the district, as well as the Facebook page and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel 19 and now Channel 15. Monday, March 15th, HFC Meeting, 7 P M, video, video conference, details to be determined. Check online at H F C C dot edu slash board dash meeting dash schedule.
President Cavallina, one item for you with the future meeting, our next scheduled meeting for the colleges is we as a board are starting to, to see about doing a hybrid option at the P12. Please let us know what the situation is at the college. Uh, it would be great to get back on campus, even if it was just a hybrid system for us.
Yeah, I'll look into that. I'll look into that and you know, I'll communicate with you directly, Mr. Chairman, about options for that. And I may actually be asking to interlope in my, my friend, Dr. Malakos, uh, nice area there, uh, which may be better suited to uh pull off that kind of um hybrid. But I will report back to you, trustee Thorpe. And um, I know our next meeting is March 15th, so I'll, I'll have to get back to you soon.
It's March 8th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the colleges will be March 15th.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's correct. Sorry.
Right. All right. At this time, we have gone through all the business in front of the board for today. So we are adjourned. Everyone stay safe, stay warm.